Good evening. The City of Plymouth City Council Special Meeting for Thursday, June 22, 2023 is now called to order. COVID-19 Advisory Pursuit to Assembly Bill AB 361. The meeting is held in person and via teleconference. In-person participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic public participation is also available by following the directions for Zoom on the agenda. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raise hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above on your phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand. Use star six to mute and unmute your phone. You can submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to the city manager at mroberts@cityofplymouth.org. Emailed public comments will be distributed to the City Council and made part of the official meeting minutes. This meeting is being recorded. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfelter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Number two, regular agenda items. 2.1 Review and Discussion Regarding Sale of Fireworks Within Plymouth City Limits and Use of Certain Fireworks on July 4. And do we have a staff report?
Mayor and City Council, Kit Carson Mountain Men Organization again would like to sell fireworks within the city limits. They'll be selling from their normal location. And we would like minimal use of TOT funds to pay for an off-duty sheriff for crowd control during the fireworks in the evening.
Okay. Usually we go to council discussion right now. Is the council okay with if I skip discussion and go directly to public comment and then come back for discussion? Okay, I'm going to open this item up now for public comment. Do we have anybody here in City Hall who would like to make public comment during this time? Okay, how about anybody on Zoom? Are there any hands raised on Zoom? If there are, I can't see from here. No? Oh. Yes, please, come on up. I'm sorry, did I not see you raise your hand back there? Okay, okay.
I was last second, like, oh, let me talk real quick.
Okay.
Peter Russo from Foxview, California. Yes, so thank you guys for bringing this back every year. It's been my baby. They also just kind of go, I mean, I appreciate the off-duty sheriff for crowd control issues. Usually we have the fire department with a, with, um, you know, an engine on either end of the street, just.
They're also be present.
Okay, great. Just clarification. All right, just didn't want to forget that.
Thank you. Okay, any, I do see a hand up on Zoom.
Yes, go ahead, Kayla.
Hi there, Kayla Deal with Amateur Fire. I just wanted to make it known during this public comment that Amateur Fire will have our normal staffed engine there from Station 122. And then in addition, we'll have a staffed volunteer engine and potentially a third one just to help with crowds and the influx of potential calls. So just wanted to make that known for you guys.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands up on Zoom. Right then, okay. So at this point, I got to close it to public comment and open this for council discussion or direction or motion made by council. Keith?
I don't have a lot of comments. I think it's a good idea.
And I'm sorry, I should have said Councilmember White. Councilmember McLaughlin?
That's a great event. I'm happy to make a motion when the time. Or I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to staff on this.
Hold your ready. Discussion comment?
Yes, this is ru-, this is routine that we go through every year. We probably should have done it at the last meeting that we held. I am concerned that Margaret interjected the, about hiring another person because that's not what's on the agenda. But I also believe that there are funds that she's authorized to spend that would cover that expense. So no one mentioned the hiring in your motions.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Sim? What?
I have nothing.
Okay, I have no comments. Yeah, I think this is pretty routine and kind of doing the speed reading through this. So I would entertain a motion?
Yep, I make a motion to approve staff's recommendation approving the sale of fireworks within the city limits of Plymouth and authorizing the use, minimal use of TOT funds for off-duty sheriff for the job.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Okay, I will say aye, but I do want to do, just with what Councilmember Kleinfelter did say, but under staff recommendations, it does say use the TOT funds for an off-duty sheriff. So, but I do say aye on both.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
I'm voting aye to the authorization for the fireworks.
So that, so you want to amend the motion or, I mean, because the motion as presented is either yes or, or no?
Well, I tried to be helpful.
Right.
When I know, when I announced that it wasn't on the agenda and said pretty clearly that do not include that in a motion. And now we're at a point where everyone wants to approve this, but it has something in the motion that is not on the agenda.
So do you want to just clarify that your intent?
So would it be appropriate for somebody to make a substitute?
So, since I made the initial motion, I guess the question, we go to Frank. It says clearly in the staff report, which is part of the agenda, to include TOT funding for, for the, for staff.
Councilmember McLaughlin, I'd like to clarify, that was my error in the staff report. It's within my authorization, the amount to expend from the TOT funds. I don't need, I really meant that part as informational to the council that I, I plan on expending funds to have an off-duty sheriff here.
Perfect. So I, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the sale of fireworks for the, getting back to the Kit Carson Mountain Men within the City of Plymouth.
We have a second for the amended.
Second motion.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, so this meeting is now adjourned. Okay, the City of Plymouth City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, June 22, 2023 is now called to order. Coronavirus COVID-19 Advisory Pursuit to Assembly Bill AB 361. This meeting is held in person and via teleconference electronically. In-person participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic public participation is also available and by following the information on the agenda to access Zoom. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above on your phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand. Use star six to mute and unmute your phone. You can submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comments to the city manager or deputy city clerk before 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting. And just to make it clear, want to make sure everybody understands that previously we have requested that comments be submitted by 5:00 PM. It's now been changed to 3:30 PM moving forward. Emailed public comments will be distributed to the City Council and made part of the official records. This meeting will be recorded. Please silence all your cellphone or your, please silence your cellphone or similar devices. Could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember White?
I'm still here.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Here.
Mayor Ackerman?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilmember McLaughlin, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one and made in the eye of this world, with every being that stands before us.
Number two, approval of the City Council Regular Meeting Agenda for tonight, June 22, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion was made and seconded. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Number three, public comment. Under provisions of the California Code, citizens wishing to address the City Council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing a speaker's submittal form to the deputy city clerk or following the instructions noted on this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the post-, posting of the agenda. Public comments related to an item on the open session portion of this agenda, which are distributed to the City Council less than 72 hours prior to the meeting, shall be available for public inspection at the time of the meeting. So I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anybody here in City Hall who would like to make public comment? I'm going to ask you to wait just a minute until these are passed out. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to state, I'm going to skip through some things. Number one, Commissioner Moreno is a creator and admin of a private political group called Bickle Barrel on Facebook. You can see Commissioner Moreno's city business and council meetings posted there on the page. And number two, Commissioner Moreno's private political group is created as a response to an unofficial survey the commissioner worked on about a then-agendized council business hot button topic. And there you can see Councilman Kleinfelter's no votes from 2020 and 2023 regarding the CDBG funds. It was four to one votes both times in the two separate years. Number three, Commissioner Moreno is a private political group's creator and admin, controls the way members comment to her in the political group. And that's just a handful of members on there have been telling me that. So that's, that's who I heard that from. Number four, Commissioner Moreno may choose which constituents, non constituents have access to her private political group. And AB 992 doesn't shine on this idea too well because it likes having an open and accessible to the public without approval by a person or entity other than the social media platform kind of thing. So it's AB 992. Number five, Commissioner Moreno's private political group on social media disallows screenshots to be taken of any group content under threat that constituents may be banned if they share photos of content. I put a screenshot there of the rules. And so I, and already, one of the admins has already used a screenshot of one of my comments from somewhere else to use in a comment to me. So for whatever that's worth. Commissioner Moreno's private group disallows political peers with secondary timelines from participating, using their political timeline that they might have on Facebook separate from their personal timeline. It's just something that's, you know, nationally applicable. There's, there's things where you just, you have to be careful what you say. Number seven, the more the rules are printed there. Number seven, Commissioner Moreno is subject to AB 992, as shown here in a slideshow by Los Angeles County Council. The lawyer there, but there's a link there you can see that they made, the lawyer made there. Says that if there are local legislative bodies, the Brown Act applies to anything that is created by the board like commissions. Commissioner Moreno and Councilman Kleinfelter worked in other groups to suppress commentary about the commissioner's private political group. The other admins from one of these groups were kind of shocked and laughing at the politicians' choices to suppress free speech about the commissioner's group elsewhere online. And so those admins just said, well, you know, put it in one of our other groups. It's fine, it's still up. And moving on, the commissioner was, let's see, I was also suppressed free speech during a previous group. Yes. Oh, just, oh, almost up. Can I just finish one second? Yeah, I just say that it leads to, you know, someone like me to wonder if a public hearing needs to be made before the commissioner's actions online. And maybe if there should be some kind of ethics code triggered by things that are said online. Anyway, there's a lot more details there. And the other admins from the other groups that gave me the private messages were, have more information if you need it. So there you go, your online fund for the week.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here in City Hall who would like to make public comment? Okay, anybody on Zoom who would like to make public comment? If, if so, if you could just raise your hand.
No hands are raised at this time.
Okay. So I'm going to close public comment for tonight and move on to item number four. We do have a presentation tonight by Robert Lambic from SCORE. So come on up and thank you for being here.
Thank you for the invitation. I think Dana, could we start with that video?
It really feels like it's been me, my community and SCORE that's built up the business to what it is now. I'm the founder and creator of Sunbar, a dim sum restaurant and bar where we specialize in the Chinese cuisine dim sum and specialty cocktails. Specifically for me as a first generation Asian American, there's familial pressure to do the traditional corporate ladder growth, you know, versus something as risky as a restaurant, a brick and mortar. But I am doing this for my parents, my grandparents who immigrated here. During the startup phase, SCORE was really there if I needed it as this foundation. I could tap into my mentor, I could tap into the online resources. Once I found SCORE, it was very exciting to dive deep and see what it had to offer. The mentor program has been fantastic and I'd love to contribute and be a mentor myself at some point, once I get experience and maybe some time. I don't know where I would be without the guidance. There are tried and true people who've done this before, who've mastered and failed, maybe so that I wouldn't have to fail. And that, I think, was giving me a huge head start. First generation. It really feels like it's been me, my community and SCORE that's built up the business to what it is now.
Great. Thank you, Dana. Well, I'm Bob Lambic with the SCORE Association. I want to just tell you for a few minutes about SCORE. Mayor Ackerman's request went all the way from Plymouth to Washington DC, back to California and found me. And so, yeah, it's very interesting. So I am the district director for SCORE in, for the central California area. And we have multiple chapters of SCORE that I'm responsible for from Bakersfield over towards the coast and then up to the Oregon border. And we have a chapter here in Sacramento. We name it Capitol Corridor, which you can see here on the screen. And what I want to do is tell you about SCORE, in particular, what we do, and then what services we can provide to the people in Plymouth that would request those. Okay, so SCORE is a national organization headquartered in Herndon, Virginia. It's primarily sponsored by the US federal government in the form of the Small Business Administration. So SCORE is what the SBA calls a resource partner. And we are made up of primarily volunteers, which myself is, and about 45 or so other people here in the Capitol Corridor chapter. But most of them, not all of them, most of them are former business professionals that have started their own business or had some successes in some ways. And they want to give back to the community because, as we know, evidenced in Plymouth, California, as, as illuminating as anywhere, small business is the backbone of the city. And so supporting small businesses, helping them learn new skills, grow, create jobs, et cetera, et cetera, is the mission of SCORE under the auspices of the SBA as a volunteer. So that's, that's, that's kind of the main picture I want to show you. The, the big three things, without goofing up the Zoom windows here. So the three main things, let me just verbalize it and then I'll just try to show you on the website. The three main things are, number one is people can get one-on-one confidential mentoring with SCORE mentors like myself and the 40 or so other people we have in greater Sacramento Capitol Corridor area. So you go on, yes, please move mouse, mouse not moving. Sorry, guys, this is really hard to do, sort of impromptu. I'll show you in a minute. I can verbalize this better than show you. But so you can go on score.org, the national site, or forward slash Capitol Corridor, get more local. But the number one thing we do is the one-on-one mentoring with business professionals is no charge. And we assign our mentors, the clients, the clients make an application, what they're looking for and things like that. And, and we have a lot of skill sets. We don't do, of course, legal advice and we don't. We don't do, of course, legal advice and we don't do accounting, you know, financial advice per se. But other than that, we try to service all requests, so that's, that's number one. Number two is we do workshops. That are fabulous. And there's a calendar. And there we go. Oh, I was going the wrong way. My, my mistake, so you can see here upcoming events in Capitol Corridor. Just, I'm not gonna bore you, but you know, uh, aspects of running a well-run business on June twenty-sixth, and then the SBA themselves are on this one. A, a business model canvas, which is a precursor to a full business plan, some, how to do some marketing. Um, success one-on-one, uh, success starts here would be for more of a dreamer, pre-start person that. Oh, I have a dream, I have an idea, I'm gonna start a company, I'm gonna make a million dollars. And we kind of talk them through that, well, maybe you will, but maybe there's more to it than that, so we try, try to educate. People and stuff like that, here's a great session on trademarks, patents and copyrights, so anyway, you, you get the feel, so. It's a rich repository of workshops. They're ninety-nine percent free, a couple of things we do like QuickBooks training. We charge twenty bucks for or something like that, just for the instructor. But mostly all of this that I'm talking about is free. The third thing is, um. And I'm, I'm getting a little more comfortable now with the browser, but the um. That even the SBA will tell you the SCORE.org website is probably the largest repository. Of small business. Uh, information and downloadable things as you can get anywhere. Yeah, uh, how to do a cash flow forecast, how to um, do a full business plan, you know, how, on and on and on, their, their. Excel is presented right to them and people just sort of fill in the blanks and it really helps them. So of those three, what's the net effect and why am I standing here right now? Is Plymouth, like every other city, wants economic development? The more businesses start here, the more people get employed here. The, the better everything becomes. And so that's what the SCORE resources do to try to support that economic development for your city, and that's what we try to do. The only final thing I, um. I, I just want to say is with, since our diversity, equity and inclusion programs. I want to show you two angles on that because I kind of, in my earlier remarks, um. Kind of gave an implication that it's just all a bunch of like old people that have had businesses of themselves. But we, we do a lot, in particular with uh, college age kids. Um, we have interns that are what we call subject matter experts, so we match somebody like myself. With, you know, uh, a twenty-something that's like really good at social media. So, you know, I'm coaching a business, trying to get them going, they say, well, I need to do more online stuff, I can grab one of these people. And the three of us get together and it's, it's really wonderful, so. And then, oops, excuse me, and then those kids get, um. Like we'll do a reference for them when they go to get their job and stuff like that. So anyway, it's kind of nice, so just, I wanted to spell. Uh, on our DEI program, it's not, we're not all just a bunch of retired people, we have all, all sorts of people. The other thing that's super cool. In our DEI program, we spent tons of money on this. Here's our website, I mean, pick your favorite language. Which I did not do well. I was trying to get down to Spanish, now I lost my mouse. Oh Dana, there it is. There it is, I better pick a closer to the top. So you can just go here. Who knows what Belarus looks like, oh, that's what it looks like, so there's our whole website and everything. In any language you want to look at it, so the other thing with the diversity in Plymouth and um, in other parts of our state and our country. Is you'll be able to, um. To get all our information and I think it's about twenty-five or twenty-seven different languages. Okay, so that's about it, I'll recap. Uh, SCORE Association is volunteer organization, resource partner of the US SBA. We do mentoring with small businesses. We do a lot of workshops for training and then we have a giant repository. Online, people can download things for free. And any citizen of Plymouth. With a small business or even with a dream or whatever. Can go on SCORE.org and request a mentor or attend one of our workshops and ninety-nine percent of it is free. Oops, excuse me, so is that, is that what you were hoping for?
E- e- exactly, and uh. Yeah, thank you for being here and, um, I'm a, a small business owner and I think a lot of people know that. Um, my background, I'm a registered nurse. And uh, they didn't teach us anything about accounting, marketing, any of that stuff in nursing school. So way back when I utilized SCORE and now that you mention it, I remember taking some trainings to use QuickBooks and.
Okay.
Um, so it's, it's been super helpful, free. Uh, which is great.
Yes, free's a good price.
Yeah, and, and I'm not sure everybody knows, but you're local.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to say how this all magically went from here to DC and back to me, whatever. I live in Rancho Marietta, so it, like, this request could have come from Bakersfield or whatever, I was like, well, I can't be there. But I'm right down the street, so that's kind of a nice thing too. We could, if the, in later months or whatever, if you guys would like a specific workshop. Cause they might be unique needs for Plymouth or a certain initiative or something like that. So besides the list that you saw earlier. If you would like to propose that we do something specifically for Plymouth, uh, we would be happy to consider that.
Yeah, we have a small business owner here, so uh, right, right behind you, not to single you out. Um, but um. Yeah, I'd love to follow up with you, Cameron, and see if the other business owners, and I know we've got. Actually over sixty of them in town.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
We could do some cool stuff, yeah.
People, people who have talked about that they'd like to start a business.
Yeah.
And I know how daunting that idea can be.
Indeed, indeed, and a lot of times people don't know. Uh, you know, how, how strong that is, but yeah. But that's the, these are the topics that we do all day, every day. And the ultimate goal would be that the same as the SBA's goal is to support economic development in the form of small business. And help anybody in Plymouth out as much as we can.
Any council members have questions?
Yeah, Mayor Ackerman. Um. I got a, I got quite a few just questions, mostly, um. Also, do you guys keep any kind of like statistics on, like? The revitalization of the Sacramento area, do, do you guys know anything about the businesses in that area that have used your service there?
We do, and the SBA has a particular office for that.
Uh huh.
That is enormously deep, I'm not gonna come up with it live here right now.
Of course not.
But um, absolutely yes, both for SCORE and for the SBA, there's a lot of statistics in that regard.
And, and it's funny that you brought up Rancho Marietta, cause that was gonna be the area that I, have you guys been working in the Rancho Marietta area? Cause it's been going through quite the boom and so.
We have client, we have a number of clients there and we, we do have the statistics, we, we know where our workshop attendees come from. And we know where our mentoring clients come from and we do map that out and we can see, and also see growth rates, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember McLaughlin, questions, comments?
Just a comment, thank you very much for being here, what an amazing service and uh, and we look forward to, to working with SCORE going forward and thank you for your time this evening.
Nice of you to say, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that SCORE's been around a lot longer than people realize.
Nineteen sixty-four.
Yeah, we've worked with SCORE before in some of my ventures. Um, and thank you very much for coming. And I also would like to suggest to the mayor that their training sessions. Um, we could sponsor some of those QuickBooks trainings. For our local small businesses, which I think would be a win-win for everyone.
Very, thank you for saying that, very, very accurate, thank you.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Uh, yes, uh. You, do you assign a mentor? Uh, that has knowledge of the type of business that the person who's calling in needs some help, or is it more general?
Uh, you just asked a question, if you went to the SCORE chapter meeting would consume about thirty to sixty minutes of, of the meeting. Because it's so hard. And I'll give you a short answer, but I hope in my adjusting, uh. There is no absolute answer, that is so hard. In the old days before Zoom and before COVID and all this stuff, most of SCORE was. Office hours, you come in, sit across the desk from somebody. And so by that definition, whatever question may come across that desk could be horizontal, could be anywhere. You, you know what I mean? Then we get now, here we get internet, we get Zoom, we get CRM, we get all that and we go like. I want a mentor that knows how to do a carburetor on a fifty-seven Chevy. And it's like, well, I don't know that and probably most people don't know that, so that's our, we work very hard to manage that. I think the net of your question is, we try to drive everybody back to. Fund the fundamentals of the business plan, of, of the financials. And of the solid foundation for your business. And until you get on that footing. Then we can start talking about some of the more specific things. So that's the short answer of what we try to do.
I assume you, you try and direct the person to somebody who's helped somebody else with a similar situation?
We do, we do.
Business.
We do, one of, we have, uh, one of the ones that's so hot right now, we, thank you Dana for getting me back to English, but food trucks. If you have food trucks on SCORE.org, it blows up, there's like all things food trucks. So, you know, yeah, we're kind of tuned in to contemporary things too, but, but again, I want to say. The, the wisdom, if that's not too strong of a word, is. Everybody always wants to go to that pinnacle peak, like I want to do, oh, and like, whoa, whoa, slow down, you gotta go A, B, C. And do your fundamentals and then you'll get there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, it's a super pleasure, we'll be happy to work with your city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk soon. Item number five, the consent calendar items.
I'd like to pull item five-point-three for discussion.
I'm sorry, five, five-point what?
Three. And. Mayor's discretion, wherever you agendize it.
Okay, um. I think we should put it first on, under the regular and agenda items. So I don't forget, um. Is there any pub, are there any public comments on the consent calendar items? Um, let me read them first, we have correspondents. Um, approve the regular meeting minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Item five-point-three is going to be moved to the regular agenda. Five-point-four, approve the purchase order to Thatcher Company Incorporated for eight thousand two hundred seventy dollars and forty-two cents. And authorize the city manager to sign over the five thousand dollar spending authority for chlorine. Chlorine deliveries only. And five-point-five, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one to continue virtual meetings. Do we have any public comment here in City Hall on the consent calendar? Any public comment on Zoom? Any hands raised, Dana?
Not at this, oh, Amy Gomes, okay.
Hi there, this is Amy Gomes, um, I'm just, um, wanting to correct, uh, some of. Minutes, I'm going to be able to do that.
Uh, what, what correct?
Okay, so, um, I made a public comment during the um, last meeting. And some of the data that was written down, um, is incorrect, you know, so I just wanted to correct that here. So basically, I'm just gonna, I guess, ramble it off, um. So my, in the minutes on page four, um, it has my name and then it says, it mentions that their survey published on Facebook was completed by twenty business owners and residents. And I think that's where the error happened, um, later on, it says fifty-nine percent, but it should have said it was completed by fifty-nine residents and businesses.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're, let us interject for a minute.
Sure.
We, we. Published supplemental information correcting the minutes, correcting what you had stated. I had the deputy city clerk listen again and the minutes were corrected and put out with supplemental information and it does correct your data.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Okay, I, I want to make sure I give you time to, to finish, did we address that?
I, I followed the link, um, so I, I thought this was the one that was corrected because the link didn't, I didn't think the link changed, but. Um, I can just say it quickly, it's not long, um, so it, it should have said it was completed by fifty-nine residents and/or business owners and then. It was twenty business owners and that's where the error happened. And then, um, according to the survey, it says fifty-nine percent of those who completed did not support with the grant funds could be used to repair the fire station, that's. Should have been ninety percent, so I think the fifty-nine got moved over to the percentage and I just wanted that to be correct.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that those corrections are made, right?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom, Ms. Moreno, it looks like you have your hand raised?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I, I, I'm confused because the minutes you're referencing aren't on the link that's published for the city, so. Where is the supplemental, the corrected minutes showing up on the city's website? Because the minutes I'm looking at, I'm online right now, still say the fifty-nine percent. There should be a supplemental link on the website. They were put out with additional data. There was a supplemental PDF that was sent to me via email that talked about the, um, new. Um, additional information at the end of the packet. Um, but there's nothing on the city's website, I don't think that says supplemental link. Unless I'm missing it. Um, but at any rate, my name is spelled wrong and so if you didn't catch that in your corrected minutes, I appreciate if you spelled my name right.
Okay, any, anything else, Ms. Moreno, otherwise it, it looks like, uh, those corrections will be able to be made?
No, I, I would just appreciate if the information that is being reviewed and voted on by the council was available for the city to see at the time of the meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom that has their hand up?
Not that I can see.
Okay, thank you, so I'll close this to public comment right now. For the consent calendar items, and do we have a?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, we're pulling item five-point-three for a regular agenda item. And the changes as described in the minutes. You're welcome.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Number six, public hearings, there are none for tonight. Number seven, regular agenda items. Item seven-point-one, consider Amador Fire Protection District. Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, item five-point-three, approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, accepting easements over parcels. Eight and nine of Hawksview subdivision. And could we please get a staff report, do we have a staff report for this?
I'll do my best, um, this is from the city engineer's office, but. Basically, whenever Hawksview was the, um, final and the map was delivered and recorded. Um, as is common, there are certain easements, uh, or real property that is dedicated to, uh. City, county, whatever agency is receiving the dedication. And the city does not have control or ownership of that until at this point later. They choose to accept it, and that's what this item is meant to do, it's intended to perfect. That dedicated easement and to accept it. Um, and this is a portion of property that is. I'm gonna butcher the description, but it's basically like, one of, one of you all know and you're gonna let me, uh, flounder in the description, but. I'm going to butcher the description, but it's basically like, one of, one of you all know and you're going to let me, uh, flounder in the description, but. It's the corner, when you go in Hawksview and you go to the very corner, um.
Golden way?
Yeah, I think it's on Golden and there's a, it, it's a corner. And between two parcels, there's a space that essentially goes. Propane tank, I think it's a propane tank. And so, yeah, and so. Obviously, I'm assuming when the map was dedicate, when, when the map was recorded. That dedication was there to make sure there's proper ingress, ingress to service and access that area. So this is just cleaning that up. And accepting that, that's the intent of this item.
Thank you, um. Is there any staff or council discussion on this? Councilmember White. Councilmember McLaughlin. Councilmember Kleinfelter.
I just want to thank, thank you for the description and the explanation. I thought it was good for, I mean, it's real estate. Transaction, we should have a good idea what's. Why the easement wasn't accepted a long time ago, but yeah, definitely.
Vice Mayor Sim.
No comment.
And I, I have no comment on this. Um, is there any public comment? On this item, anybody here in City Hall? Please come on up.
Ron Kleinfelter, Plymouth. Uh, so before today, before your vote, we didn't have an easement through that parcel?
Uh, yes.
Uh, we had a, a paper easement, but.
Paper.
Basically, we had it on paper, but that's it. And we had, we had the right to it. To, to perfect our right to, um, use the ingress and ingress, but we never accepted it formally. So, um. Well, it existed as a dedication to the city that could accept it anytime.
So the city owns that lot for parcel? Is that correct?
This. Sorry, the city doesn't own it and fee it, it would, it would have an easement right, it would be easement holder over those parcels, but it doesn't.
Does not own that parcel?
It, it doesn't own it and fee, it only owns an easement interest in it, so it's allowed to go over.
Okay.
The encumbered property, someone owns the underlying property, we have the right to go over it.
So the gas company owns it? Propane company?
So the parcel that where the gas, the parcel where the gases, my understanding, that's city owned. And, and, and.
Parcel I'm talking.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were talking about the.
Easement through that part.
The easement is through two other parcels, I believe it splits on two parcels to get to that parcel that the city owns. So we have two, we have two concepts here. We have the actual parcel where the gas propane tank is located, that's city property as far as I understand. And then with the easement that goes from Hawksview. Through two properties to get to that, and that's the easement that's we're talking about tonight.
Doesn't make sense to me. I was there today, there's a street that goes up to that parcel where the tanks are.
Um, I think.
Season, okay.
Yeah, it's, it, it still looks like, kind of like alley, yeah, it's kind of like, looks like.
It's the street, it's. It's as wide as the street approaching it. All right. So, this, the easement's outside of the parcel. Okay.
So did, did, did you have a, a, a comment that, for the council? Or, I mean, if you have questions?
It's not related to the easement, it's related to the parcel. Okay. All right, clarify it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here in City Hall? Okay, are there any, uh, comments on Zoom? I see Ms. Marino has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Stephanie Moreno, resident and business owner. I have a question. Were the property owners, um, who own the property across which the easement is now being accepted notified of tonight's action?
So would, um, city staff like to follow up? To answer that question or?
Uh, I mean, they were notified because they took title with this encumbrance on their property that they knew the city could take at any time. I don't know if the city engineer's office reached out to them. Um, on this action particularly, but this is, uh, something that they would have. Constructive and recorded notice through, you know, the title report. In purchasing the property, um, and I think the way the built environment currently is, uh. It looks kind of like there's an alley or pathway that's between these, so. It looks like the property owners have some sense that this is an area that, that can't be developed on for purpose of the easement, but I don't know if. Anyone physically called them or sent a letter or, 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 this is something Matt was working on, so I can't speak to that.
Ms. Marino, did you have a, a specific comment? Any, anything else you wanted to add or say to the council?
I would just like to see the city in the future, um, even if it is not required by law, which I think since nineteen ninety six. Um, that, that's been a long time to have provided notice. Um. As Frank said, for constructive purposes, I, I would like to see the city make more of an effort to reach out to people so they know their property. Is on the city council agenda for proposed action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom that has their hand up? Dana?
Not that I can see.
Okay, I'll close this to public content, um, public comment now. And unless there's any other council discussion or council questions, comments, I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move to pass approve. Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty two, accepting the easement over parcels eight and nine. Of Hawksview's subdivision.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Could we please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfelter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
And thank you, Councilmember, uh, Kleinfelter for keeping me on track with that. Okay, item seven point one, consider Amador Fire Protection District, proposed assessment ranging in the amount from. Seven cents to a dollar fourteen per parcel and designate the city manager to complete the election ballot. Could we please have a staff report on this?
So the city received a ballot for, from the Fire Protection District asking for. Additional funding on parcels, for additional personnel. For the Fire District. And the total cost to the ci- city would be two dollars and fifty six cents a year total. For our parcels. And. I think the Fire District does a great job for us. And we know the expenses of personnel. And I would just hope that the council would keep that in mind when considering the item.
Thank you, is there, um. We'll have some, uh, council discussion now. Councilmember White, any comments, questions?
I'll wait right now.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
You know, I definitely have some comments and I'd like to hear, you know, I know we have a member, um, maybe AFPD here, I don't know if they have any words to say and maybe do public comment.
Councilmember Kleinfelter?
I just was, um, a bit surprised at the list of parcels. That it's saying the city owns that aren't in the city. So I'd like a bit of an explanation about that. Um, our, it may look confusing to some people, but our city map goes from here. And a line down to the sewer plant and then includes all of that property. As in the city, so where do we own property that isn't the county? I believe the property where the old water treatment plant is, is not, is, is not within city limits. I could be mistaken.
Isn't there a piece of parkland in the Sutter Vineyard area?
That's within.
That's within the city limits?
I have to apologize, I didn't do this staff report. So I didn't look up every parcel, I apologize.
Anything else for? Uh, Vice Mayor Sim?
So, my, uh, Margaret, I might understand that we're, uh, we're going to be paying two dollars and fifty six cents per parcel. Times how many parcels?
No, that's total cost.
It's a total cost?
Yes.
So we've gone from seven cents to that number?
Right, we have one parcel that, we have two parcels that the increase is seven cents, the tax is seven cents. And then we have one parcel that it's a dollar fourteen, but if you add up all the parcels that they're saying. Are within the county, it's two dollars and fifty six cents.
That's what we're, we're talking about, two dollars, okay?
Yes.
Seems very weird, but I'm okay with that.
And it, 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 it looks like, um. It, it looks like these ballots are due by July eighteenth. Um. If, eh, July eighteenth?
Yes, and Ms. Dale with the Fire District has her hand up, she may be able to answer some of our questions as well.
Okay, 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 so I'm going to go ahead and open this to public comment for right now. Is there anybody here in City Hall who would like to speak publicly, publicly on this? Okay, how about on Zoom? Dana?
Go ahead, Ms. Dale.
Hi, Kayla Dale, PIO for Amador Fire. Apologize, I can't be there, I'm coming from another meeting, but. Um, if there is questions in regards to which parcels or APNs are within the city limits or outside of the city limits, I'm happy. Um, to work with one of you to confirm those exact locations and the, the placement of them. Um, this was all done through the county assessor's office, so the information came through the assessor's office, um, at the county admin building. So if there's questions regarding that, I'm happy to help. I don't have a map in front of me, unfortunately, I apologize for that, but I can, um. Get ahold of whoever has those questions or help when I return to the office tomorrow morning. And then in, I think that was that I had two parts, but I will raise my hand again if I can help answer another question.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Marino, it looks like you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have several questions. Um, I'm confused, um, and maybe Ms. Dale could, um, clarify this. Um, is the ballot just for unincorporated areas or is it supposed to be for both unincorporated? And within the city limits because I haven't received a ballot, um, within the city limits, so. And I thought that the city's assessments were handled differently, so is this ballot supposed to only be for unincorporated areas? Or is the intent of AFPD that it's supposed to cover both? Those within the city and those in the unincorporated areas? That would be my first question. Um, my second question is that I, um, I thought that public properties are typically exempt from taxes and fees. So I was wondering why the city of Plymouth is, um, being assessed. Um, a parcel fee on these properties in first place, even though it is very low. Um, um, the third question is, the staff report says funds from this assessment can only be used to provide fire protection emergency services within AFPD boundaries. City of Plymouth is not within AFPD boundaries. So I was wondering why the assessment, if it's being collected in Plymouth. Um, would have a limitation on not being used within Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, can we?
I can go ahead and help answer some of those if this is an okay time. Um, so, sorry, you may have, Stephanie, you may have to keep me in line here with, hopefully I answer your questions in order. Um, so in regards to the benefit assessment, it is only for the unincorporated areas of the county. Um, and if nobody within the city limits should have received a ballot, if they. I, I don't know of anybody who did and it sounds like you didn't, so I hope I'm answering your question right. Amador Fire in the past has done the assessment for Plymouth, the city of Plymouth, giving you guys the numbers, um. For reimbursement and you guys pay us back in the two installments for that. So that's, um, probably where some confusion has been in the past, it's a totally different process, um, nothing to do with this current benefit assessment. And then in regards to questions about the properties within city limits, like I said before. Um, I, I would recommend that we look at those tomorrow when I return to the office. Um, we did have some that were done through the assessor's office. For the city of Jackson that were a mistake, they should have not been built, but there, um, was an error in the assessor's office. Which was caught through this process, so I'm not necessarily saying that that's the situation here, but I would love to, um, just triple check that to make sure. It's.
I think we may have lost Ms. Dale.
Sorry, I'm here still, can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, uh, I, I think I answered two of your three questions, forgive me if you, if you want to say what the third part or what I missed on that was. Sorry, I'm.
Oh, it was just that I thought that public properties weren't typically subject to taxes and fees, so I was just wondering about that.
Um, yeah, so we can, I'm happy to triple check, if you, if you want to be that point person with me, I'll be in the office tomorrow morning, I'm happy to get ahold of you. And we can triple check that. It shouldn't have been, as long as it's city owned from my, um, understanding, I don't want to misspeak. I can triple check that with the engineering company and how the parcels were sent out.
I would not be the point person on that, it would be the city, I'm just a member of the public asking the question.
I can, I can answer that if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Uh, our city attorney?
Article thirteen D, section four A of the California Constitution says, the parcels in the district that are owned by, used by any agency. City of California, United States shall not be exempt from assessment unless the agency can demonstrate by clear and convincing evidence. Those publicly owned parcels in fact receive no special benefit, so the answer is they can be unless we can provide by clear and convincing evidence otherwise.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Ms. Roberts?
If the council so chooses, um, and you wish to. Make a motion on this, you can always make the motion conditioned on, I checked the parcels to make sure they are all within the county.
Okay, thank you.
And that they're city owned.
Okay. Um. Do we have any other hands up for public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and, and close this to public comment and open this back up to the council. For direction or emotion?
Yep, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Um, I think it, it's, um, you know, I think it's valid looking through, you know, appreciate Ms. Dale's o- offer to, to. Validate the information just to make sure that, um, the two dollars and fifty six cents is appropriately assessed if need be. You know, I think it's just important, is we're going to be taking, um, and not, and action tonight, um, looking at our budget, that I think you just, you know, recognizing the. I, I guess the, the, the benefit scale. I, I guess the, the, the benefit scale of, under which we operate. So the city of Plymouth pays in total thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars a year for fire protection. That doesn't even pay for the fuel for the engine that runs out of there during that same period of time. So we truly have an incredible benefit, and because of the contract nature that we have, we are not. You know, the city's contracted as a whole with AFPD, we're not individual parcels, so we don't have the individual ballots. But I think it's important for context to understand the true, I guess, I shall we say bargain, right? The amount of money we pay compared to the service we receive, you know, the amount of money we pay is miniscule. As compared to the benefit we have of having the fire department in our community. With that, if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to. To direct the city manager to vote for the affirmative, to approve the assessment on the ballot. Pending the information returned from AFPD and Ms. Dale is, in regards to the ability for these parcels to be assessed.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackland?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item seven point two, to consider a contract with Amador General Services. For animal control services in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and three dollars. And can we get a staff report, please?
I received a letter from General Services in early June requesting us to sign a contract. Letter came via email with no prior contact. And the amount that they're asking to me is obscene, considering the service that we are getting in our community. They responded eight times to the city for service in a twelve month period. Which would equate to a large amount of money per call. I tried reaching out to the county on several, on several occasions. The gentleman was never in his office. I did leave a message and did not get a return phone call. Basically, they're saying we pay the amount or July first, we're cut off of services. So what I'm asking is, staff is not recommending approval of this agreement. But that the council consider not approving the agreement and providing me with different direction to go back and try to negotiate. Further, or to send them a letter saying thank you, but no thank you. I'll take whatever direction the council chooses.
Okay, thank you. Council discussion, Councilmember White?
I gotta agree with our city manager when I read over the staff report on this. That is an awful lot of money. It also sounds in the nature of that the Sheriff's Department did say that they would. Deal with barking dogs. We do have code enforcement that will deal with barking dogs. I, I can't see in the, the city itself and the, and maybe. Maybe a goat getting out into Pokerville's parking lot that we really need to call animal control. You know, on a lot of things, I mean, don't get me wrong. It could happen, but. I, hopefully we can renegotiate some things.
I, I had a question. Did we, was this a contract before?
Our contract with Animal Control Services expired. Many years ago, several years ago, and we've been working without a contract. With the agreement with the prior staff. That if they received a call from a citizen from Plymouth, that they referred them to city staff. And we would go out and check the situation and determine if animal control actually needed to come out or not. And that's how we've been operating the last several years. And that was what was transpiring until the new person came on board and then this contract. And there was no. Contact in between.
And that's part of my problem is that the, the lack of negotiation or discussion. You have to bring, if you want a contract, that means there's two parties to a contract. That are talking about it and coming to a conclusion together. And I also take issue with the July first demand. I'm, I'm inclined to say. Let's go to the county to their boss.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Throughout my career, I've been involved in negotiating many contracts. And you, you never just send a letter by email and never follow up. And you certainly follow up to phone calls and requests for information for further clarification, especially when a legislative body needs to take action. This isn't, this isn't an appropriate way of doing business at all. I, I too, I'm not in favor of going forward on this. A thirty-six thousand dollar ask for eight calls comes out to, I think what you had is four thousand dollars a call. I'm sure, you know, Sheriff, AFPD, many, many others would love to receive four thousand dollars a call too. But yeah, that's, you know, that's crazy. So we're going from zero to thirty-six thousand without any conversation or negotiations. Now, I think where we need to go is, is, you know, my opinion is, is deny this and direct staff to go back and work. I tend to agree with, with. With Councilmember Kleinfeldter, to take this to the next level in the organization, as this individual has been unresponsive and based off the way. You know, the business is shared, but if we want to take one more bite of the apple, I could support that too. But yeah, I'm not in favor of moving this forward.
Councilmember Sim?
I'm looking at the reason, how, how they came to that figure and now it's a percentage of population. So my, my, my thinking is they probably are not going to be very negotiable. Because if we did so, they'd probably have negotiated all the contracts for the various cities. We're, we're a very small part of it, we're only, we're three percent of this, this total number here. So I, I agree, four thousand a call is ridiculous. I, I, one question, you, you probably don't know this, Margaret, but of the eight calls last year, were most of the calls due to barking dogs? Or do you recall what these calls were all about?
I was unable to get that answer.
That's okay.
The only answer I was able to get was that they responded eight times.
My guesses are probably barking dogs and. I know one incident with them for quite some time last year, but anyway. I agree, it's, it's, it's a, it's a ridiculous number for that many calls. And if so, if, if we don't sign a contract, obviously they go away and then we rely on the sheriff. Well, first of all, we rely, we rely on ourselves, staff, to take care of the problem. If that doesn't get resolved, we call the sheriff. Is that how you, how it works?
Yes, currently we respond out on any animal complaint and find out if we need assistance or if we can handle it. We handle all the dead animal calls, our Public Works Department takes care of all that. Barking dogs and vicious or animals, the Sheriff's Office automatically responds on. And in talking with Sheriff Redmond, they would continue to respond on.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and open this to public comment. Anybody here in City Hall who'd like to? Make some public comment on this? Okay, nobody in City Hall. Anybody on Zoom with their hand raised?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll close this to public comment. And. Open this back up to the council for council direction or emotion?
I think the council should make a recommendation to the city manager to not enter into a contract. And to pursue a negotiation.
I agree with that. Is that a general consensus among the council?
And, and just one item if I could add is consider calls for service in a particular year as opposed to population. As the means for the cost. So take their total cost of doing business divided by the total number of calls of service. Ours would be times eight, would be a more commensurate way of doing it for a service-based entity.
Is that clear for you? Okay, thank you. Okay, item seven point two, consider a contract with Am, oops, I'm sorry. Item seven point three, consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. A project lists for fiscal year twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four. For estimated available funding of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and four dollars by Senate Bill One. The Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen. Could we please get a staff report?
This item comes annually to the council and we, staff has put together a list to submit. It's just a preliminary list, the list can be changed at any time, it's a living, breathing document. We did submit the roads that we have been receiving the most complaints on. Those were the, the streets that we listed on. On the report that went to the agency. It is a small amount, it's not going to do a lot of work, but it will at least do one, maybe two streets.
Okay, thank you. Council comment? Councilmember White? Councilmember McLaughlin?
I am good at this time.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I'm good, normal, normal business.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Sim?
Just curious, how did this, this number come to be? Has it been this number?
That's the number the state gives us. How they come to that number, I don't know.
Good enough, thank you.
And the state has, it, it's kind of like the cops' funds are done. They base it on the total amount they get, and then it is broken down for each entity. So it is, like you say, a living and breathing thing. It's not going to be the same one year to the next.
Thank you. Like to open this to public comment. Is there anybody in City Hall who'd like to comment on this item? Nobody in City Hall? Is there anybody on Zoom with their hand raised?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close this to public comment. And with the council, I'd entertain a motion or staff direction?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, funded by SB one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of two thousand and seventeen.
It's actually resolution thirty-three, not thirty-five.
I'm sorry, that correction didn't get. Through.
So keep the motion with the correction of Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackland?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Item seven point four, review and adopt resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four, approving the fiscal year twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four city budget. And can we please have a staff report?
Yes, first I'd like to thank the council for the special meeting on the budget workshop, that was helpful. We did follow through on many of the requests that you made. We added in the previous year so that you could have the comparison. Just want to point out that the history is not all apples and oranges since we. Are not using some funds anymore and we've transferred them so that they're actually departmentalized where they were previously non-departmental. I do want to correct and update, and update statements that I made during the workshop. I was asked about donations and I just wanted to point out that. Ashley from Asian Taste did so well last Fourth of July, that she did donate part of her proceeds back to the city. And then I was told that there were at least two people that paid their fines for code enforcement to the city. So I was asked about that and I, so I wanted to correct that. And the other comments that the council had during the workshop, they've all been incorporated into the budget. If there's anything that we missed, please let us know. Mary and I'd be happy to make those adjustments. And, and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
We beat it up pretty good, but I'm sure we'll come back around and beat it up a little bit more, but right now we're, I'm good.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yeah, I don't have anything at this time. I thank you for the work that you and Mary have done pulling this together. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
I want to thank them for. Going along with adding the things. I know it was extra work, but it's so much easier to see when it's side by side. And then my, my comment is, okay, we have one. Contract with the Sheriff's Office that uses cops' funds. So I'm, I am objecting to dispatching being in a second line item. Because it makes it appear that it's a contract of its own. Which is going to cause us additional problems in the future. We don't have that contract now. The budget should reflect what we have.
We will make that adjustment. And in terms of the call, of the previous columns, they were there, they were just hidden. So it, it took us just a couple of seconds to add those back in.
Vice Mayor Sim?
I also want to thank you for all your hard work on this budget. I mean, this, this was not easy. Certainly does illuminate some things and thanks, thanks so much for all your hard work here, Mary.
And then I really just have some. Questions to help me understand this. I'm looking at page twenty-four at the very bottom for the city clerk. And I see fifteen hundred dollars requested for travel.
That is for deputy city clerk training.
Okay. And then on page twenty-five, down at the. The first line in the Public Works, Public Services category. Salaries and wages. The current budget, eighty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars, but year-to-date is two hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars. Help me understand that.
I will do my best. The salaries weren't coded out to the different places where they were, they've been working. So in the upcoming year, they're actually allocated to where they should be allocated and charged to the different funds that they actually should be charged to.
Okay. Okay, those are the only questions that I had, so I'll open this to public comment. Is there anybody here in, in City Hall who would like to make public comment? Does not look like it. Anybody on Zoom? Is there? Okay, I see a hand raised. Ms. Moreno?
Thank you, Stephanie Moreno, Plymouth resident business owner. I have a question also about the sheriff's line item on page thirty-five. It says the current budget for the sheriff's office is three hundred thousand. Year-to-date is fifty thousand, and then the request is a hundred thousand. Could you explain what those three things mean? What, what those columns signify?
As far as I'm, I know, our contract, we've had the contract for many years. It hasn't changed very much over the years, and the contract has been for a hundred thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars and I don't know where the figure three hundred thousand came from. But that's not what we're being asked to approve of either.
But is that what's in this year's budget? The twenty-two, twenty-three budget is three hundred thousand?
No, one hundred. And, and.
So, so that's what I'm asking is what does this column signify that it says current budget three hundred thousand? I, I don't understand what that signifies.
I don't, I have no idea where that number came from in this um. Because we've never paid that much. I do know that it is a hundred thousand and I've asked Margaret. To change how that was declared in the budget. To the sheriff's contract and not have it separated between the contract and the dispatch. And I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, any other comments, Ms. Moreno?
Yeah, I'd like an answer to my question if I could. I'd like to know what current budget means in that column. Does that mean that that's the budget for this year that you're adopting? Does that mean it's the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three? I, I don't understand what that column signifies and why it has three hundred thousand in it if the sheriff's contract is a hundred thousand. That's my question. Thank you.
So Ms. Roberts, uh, would you prefer to follow up with Ms. Moreno and, or one of us and. Help us understand that part? Or would you like to, are you? Positioned to address it now?
I would have to double check on why those numbers are in there, but that is what is in the current budget. I'll have to go back and look as to why, but there's no intentions of spending three. It will only be one hundred, what the cops grant is.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other public comments? Do I see any other hands raised on Zoom? Or are there any?
I, not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close this to public comment and um. Look for more council discussion, questions, direction, emotion.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, I, you know, I think it's just, uh, you know, our, our budget is our. Our playbook for a fiscal year, right? And, you know, I think it's, you know, just an important piece that, that. You know, bringing some things to light that as we moved into this current calendar year, um, that we did not have a fiscal year budget of which, you know, for fiscal year twenty-three, which will. End here this, next week. Um, and uh, achieved that, um, you know, that we've um, worked together. Initiate audits. We're getting fee studies that were out of date, up and going. Um, that, uh, you know, it's been. Like really quite an effort of, I, I guess, internal housekeeping work that's been going on now for, for several months, a lot of which is not necessarily visible to the public, but the work has been. You know, very difficult and not easy. And, and I know Ms. Roberts, you know, has the, the battle wounds. Um, as a, the scars, scars that is, um, as a result. And, and I know in um, the statement, um, the opening letter, the city manager's letter and the budget, it talks about our goal in this next year is moving forward and focusing on. Revitalizing downtown and, and uh, I'm really looking forward to uh, actually being able to focus on some outward facing. Um, work and projects as we move into this next fiscal year. So thank you for all the work that you and, and Mary and members of your team have done and uh. And that is all.
Thank you. Uh, Council member White? Any comments? Okay. Council member Kleinfelter, any additional comments?
I'm wondering if it's possible as part of the motion to make sure that we strike. The three hundred thousand amount out of the document. That way it's only talking about the hundred thousand dollars that is for the contract.
But if the, if the three hundred thousand dollars is in the current budget. Can we strike that?
I will verify. I will go back to the meeting where the budget was adopted. That number actually shocked me too. I, it seems have just been crazy. Um. I plan on making these changes and publishing a, an adopted budget that will then go online with um. Council member Kleinfelter's request to move the cops grant all into the cops line. That's, that's a really easy fix and I can correct that um, when I get that. Get. My current budget in front of me.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Sim?
Uh, yes. We've been paying a hundred thousand dollars with no contract. For a number of years, as I understand it.
No, we have a contract with the sheriff's department.
Well, it, it hasn't been reviewed or hasn't been renewed.
No, it has been.
It has been renewed?
Yes.
Up until now?
Yes.
Okay, we, we're paying a hundred thousand dollars. And we know they're going to be asking for a big raise.
Yes.
And the three hundred thousand is a, a number that obviously. Nobody knows where that's going to go next year and the year after. It may be three hundred thousand. It may be more. So I, I don't see a problem with having that number of three hundred thousand in that square because it's, it's a budget. Not a hard number, right? A hard number is a hundred thousand.
Right, but I want to make sure that the number actually reflects what the council adopted last year. Because that's the current budget. That's not what you're adopting. Tonight. So I want to make sure that that current budget line actually reflects what the council adopted last year.
Okay.
Because there were no budget adjustments. So I just want to make sure that that is accurate when we publish the final. Approved document.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions or comments. Um. I would look for council direction or um, entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four approving fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Thank you. Do we have a, a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Council member White?
Aye.
Council member McLaughlin?
Aye.
Council member Kleinfelter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman?
I with a thank you that you were able to do this on time. Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Yeah, item seven point five, discussion on the proposed Putnam development outside the city limits. And could we please get a staff report on this?
The Putnam branch is in the county. Area and it abuts the city limit sign out by Zinfandel Ridge. The current application in the county is for the tentative subdivision map and the general plan amendment. It's outside of our sphere of influence. Which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think we need to look at what our sphere of influence is rather than it just being our city limits. Because we do need to pay attention to what's around us. Um, the project is geographically north of Highway forty-nine and Highway sixteen intersection. Past the south end of the city. The application's being reviewed by the planning department at the county. And that's the jurisdiction of the project. The county's. Is currently at the planning permit stage with a list of thirty-five reviewing agencies. As provided by the project planner that we checked with. And that includes tribal and the letter submitted by Caltrans. So far, the hearings that have been before Amador County have been the TAC meeting, which took place initially on Au- August eighteenth. Of two thousand twenty-two and most recently on June first. And the TAC committee found that the project was deemed complete with their June first meeting as part required of the traffic study. The traffic impact study. When they get into the EIR. We need to pay close attention because. Traffic could impact Plymouth. Um, the sequel process, they still have to do the EIR process, which would first require the RFP, RFQ. To take place and then the subsequent draft notice of preparation to follow and the procedures that go after that. Uh, Ms. Ventura, our previous planning director did write a letter in December of two thousand twenty-two. Which was only an informational letter to the county. Planner. And the project is a fifty-three parcel subdivision. And the general. Plan amendment application that's been submitted is being processed by the county. And I can try to answer any questions. Um, this did come to us. Came to my attention recently, so I haven't had time to read all the documents that went with it. Our planner did reach, our current planner did reach out to the county planner in charge of this project and that's where I got the information from.
Thank you. Um, Council member White, any questions or comments on this item?
I think the tricky part on this whole thing is, is of course, because it sits out the city limits or the incorporated city limits. Um, but we all know that it's going to impact. Our roads, it's going to impact our stores, it's going to impact our population, just like everything else does around here. And. I agree with what Margaret has presented us on. How she feels that it's the, the sphere of our ideas because it just sits right outside the city. We, we might need a little bit of a. Say or an impact into that.
Council member McLaughlin?
You, you know, we're this, um. You know, you know, it's unfortunate that we're going to be a development that literally abuts the city that we have no real say and ultimately the challenge for us comes back into the adopted general plan that we have in place. You know, sphere of influence generally is something extends considerably beyond your city limit sign. So we have the ability to quote unquote. Influence decisions made in those particular areas. But as a general rule, our sphere of influence is our city limit boundary, which really limits our authority. This particular project is in our. Planning area for future planning, but it's not in our sphere of influence, which, you know, sort of nullifies. Um, not nullifies, but minimizes our, um, our ability to, to influence the process. And I'm in full agreement. We need to be. Yeah, eyes open on this and engage fully in the EIR and other appropriate processes and. Um, watch where this goes. And as, you know, our city grows is, you know, consider. The annexation, right? I think where annexation is important is that, you know, as we get these developments that are just outside the city limits, they get all the benefits. If you will, of being part of the city, but the city gets no benefits with the projects um, that are adjacent to. So. Um, I mean, I know that's not even on the table for this one, but uh, anyway, thank you for your report.
Council member Kleinfelter?
I think what I was, I was most alarmed by is the letter. Stating that the city was not interested in annexation. When this council or the planning commission have never discussed that.
Yeah.
Um, very upsetting. And so I've calmed my happy whatever out. Down by knowing that the EIR process will include the city of Plymouth. As, as much as we want to be included. We, we will be addressing things and. Annexation is, is part of that discussion. Um. This project came to the city in nineteen ninety-seven. Almost exactly the way you're seeing it now. So they at that time had come to the city requesting annexation. So there is a history of that. And so I don't want us to just give up because. I'm strongly concerned about blocking off an area of your city borders. And then another one and another one and you have no place to go. So I think it's going to be a long discussion, but I think it's worthy staying on top of us.
Vice Mayor Sim?
It's four hundred and twenty-five acres. Uh, it's, it's only fifty-two parcels. However, I, I totally agree with the. Council and I, I, Kleinfelder in, in that this needs to be, uh, needs to be watched very carefully. Uh. Margaret, uh, I, I presume that somebody should be going to the various uh. Supervisors beings and, and stand on top of, of this issue as well. Rather than just hoping that our, our planner lets us know what's going on. Are we?
I've requested notification for all future meetings of the planning. Department, not just on this issue, but all of their planning. Agendas.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
And then it seems like it, it, this is something that would be appropriate to um. Be updated for the, our planner to be updating the planning commission on a regular basis.
Yes, as, as this process moves forward, we would definitely want to have input from our planning commission. To make any kind of recommendations that they see fit to you, for you to then provide me direction to take to the county. Absolutely.
So I'd like to open this to public comment. Is there anybody here in City Hall? Who would like to make a public comment on this? Nobody in City Hall. Is there anybody on Zoom? I can't see if there's any hands raised.
No hands at this time.
Okay. I'll close this to public comment and this was for um, information only. Uh, yeah, so move on.
Can, actually, can I, just a, a question, um, in. Uh, to adjust the lines of our sphere of influence and, and I'm afraid I'm asking a question that's going to open Pandora's box, but adjusting our. Our sphere of influence, that would be a, a massive update to our general plan. That wouldn't be just a, a minor administrative update in the general plan. What would be involved in making? That adjustment so that we more, uh, so we have a position to be able to truly influence what happens in, around our city.
Yeah, it's a, you're right. It's a big deal. Um, it requires. Obviously a general plan amendment. It requires LAPCO, go through process of LAPCO to metasphere. Um, and here. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we have. Uh, and obviously environmental document will go along with that as well. And then, and then you have to do that before you can legally annex. You can't do them at the same time. So you'd have to do the sphere first and then you would have to go through a process with LAPCO and the county to annex. You'd have to come up with a tax sharing agreement, pre-zoning, all that stuff. So it would be a. Arduous and timely te- task and costly.
There, they always are though, Frank. I mean, if we're going to do it, that it, that it takes a long time and it costs money. But what the, uh, the. You know, the alternative is to not do anything and end up exactly the same way we are. So, um, I. I know this was for discussion only and I think we've discussed it today.
I just have one question. Frank, uh, what, if, if we had expect four hundred twenty-five acres, what would be our? Uh, responsibility. To, to the, uh, development.
I mean, that's such a, so I mean, we have to imagine a world in which they already don't, aren't getting entitlements with the county. Um. But if we annexed it and the developer wanted to build in this, in the city's annexed area, I mean, you can enter into a pre. Annexation development agreement. So you can enter into agreement that says if, if the city annexes. And we won't protest annexation and will cooperate, then you would enter into development agreement as to what. All the things that will go in development agreement, really to financing. Um, dev- you know, development of, of specific places, fees. All that kind of stuff will be thrown into the development agreement. So you, you can enter into a DA with a developer. On property that is yet to be annexed. You can't do it though, when there's not even, it's not even within the sphere.
Would they include, uh, water and sewer as well?
Yeah, you would cover all of those bases. To make sure there is proper water supply, you know, to do a WSA water supply assessment. To make sure there's infrastructure to serve it, all that kind of stuff. Um, and then you did Sequa, you know, it'd be the whole. The whole thing.
Okay, are we okay with moving on? Item seven point six, discuss and consider sending a letter opposing SB five eighty-four labor force house short-term rental tax law. And could we please get a staff report on this?
So this is very important legislation for the city of Plymouth. In, in a bad way, in a very negative way. The state imposing a fifteen percent statewide tax on top of existing TOT taxes um, would cripple our, our tourism here that we get. Um, I think it's critical that we, um, write these letters and reach out to our legislators and do whatever we can to oppose this legislation. A lot of our budget is based on TOT funds, and this could really hurt us. And thank you, Councilmember Kleinfeldter, for forwarding all of these alerts to us. They're very helpful.
Council discussion, uh, Councilmember White?
I'm good at this time.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yeah, nothing to add.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Well, I wanted to discuss the fact that um, League of California Cities is opposed to this for obvious reasons, are strongly opposed. Um, but everyone understands the need for labor force housing. My, my, again, my decision to not of support this bill is, this is not the way to go about funding labor force housing. And many jurisdictions are not gonna have the quandary that we're gonna be in with an RV park. The RVers are a different sort of vacationer. And when you're talking about a twenty-five percent per day tax on their fee, that's not far to Nevada with your RV. So I think it's very detrimental to our businesses, and I recommend opposing.
Uh, and, and, and I would a- agree that, given how much we rely on tourism, that this, this would be a bad idea for us. Um, so I'd like to open this to public comment. Anybody here in City Hall have any public comment? Okay, nobody in City Hall. Does anybody on Zoom have public comment? And I see, uh, Ms. Moreno's hand up. Ms. Moreno?
Thank you, Stephanie Moreno, Plymouth resident business owner. Um, I have a question, um, and, um, a suggestion, I guess, depending on that answer to that question. Um, the, the, um, bill is written, um, exempts hotels, inns, motels, or bed and breakfasts. Um, it talks about occupancies of home, houses, room in a house, um, or other lodging. Um, and so I'm wondering if the forty-niner trailer village is gonna be subject to it, since it already is subject to TOT. I would assume it is, but the law doesn't really talk about um, non-housing type units. So I was wondering if maybe there could be some clarification against that, um, about that. And the reason I ask is because, um, they just put an urgency clause in this bill. It looks like it's on a pathway to, um, approval. Um, it's passed out of several committees, it's now in the Assembly. And so I'd like to recommend that you oppose and amend, send oppose and amend letter. Um, if, um, recreation vehicle parks are included in this, that you oppose the bill, but also recommend that exempt, um, if passed, exempt, um, recreational parks, so that they aren't subject to this. It would just be the Airbnbs that would be, be caught up in the, uh, bill if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, the recommendation from the League of California Cities was actually to oppose unless amended. So I, I, that is, I think we can live with that suggestion that, you know, we're in opposition. Well, first of all, the question, it, are these included? We're in opposition to this, and if they are, why? So I don't have any problem with including the language about RV parks in the letter.
Is there anybody else on Zoom with their hand up?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close this to public comment right now and bring this back to, uh, the council for direction. And I, I don't, I also say that I'm in support of sending this letter. Do we have a consensus?
Yeah, uh, if we, do we need to take action? If we need to take action, I make a motion to, uh, descend the oppose. Okay, yeah, no, just, yeah, then, yeah, I support the direction, and I'd say it'd be important to get it loaded up to the portal first thing tomorrow, especially if it's already gone to the Senate.
Okay, I think there's a consensus here. Okay, council staff communications. Um, could we please have a city manager's report?
Um, just wanna report on, um, Pizza in the Park again. It is doing very well. We had a couple of kids approach the city to sell beverages since Blue Stone Pizza is not doing beverages, and so they set up a little shade tent, and they were selling beverages this, yesterday. Um, not sure how, how well they did, but they were set up, they were very polite. As I bought my, my beverage there. And then I have set up weekly on our HCD grants. I have set up weekly, um, check-ins with Lauren, um, Pollock with HCD for status checks and for her to tell, keep on me on what's next and and what I need to be on track with. And so, um, at the next meeting, there'll be a couple of policies coming forward from our meeting just this past week. So there'll be some policies coming that relate to CDBG grants.
Thank you. Councilmember reports or, uh, requests for future agenda items. Councilmember White?
I am good at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember McLaughlin?
I, um, as a, as a report, um, just a note with, uh, uh, Councilmember Sim is, is taking the lead to, you know, working with the city or actually working with the ambassadors to help the city to get, uh, the fence part painted in the park, um, this coming Saturday morning. So I'm looking forward to seeing that as a, as a white fence. That'll be a, a nice little, um, feature to get there. And then I have, um, two items I'd like to, uh, request, uh, for future agenda. One I'd like to, you know, ideally be next meeting, but getting a report on the, our water analysis and our ability to, to sell the water, um, to be able to just make sure we continue leaning into that and pushing that piece forward. Um, and then, um, I also have one item that I'd like to propose to be a, a policy of, of, you know, just toward the, the use of camera and Zoom with meetings within the spirit of the Brown Act. It's supposed to be open, transparent, that, you know, for city officials and certain presenters as they use Zoom to have cameras on, so that we can know who we're interacting with and see who we're interacting with. Um, and, uh, and so, um, I will submit this to, um, copy to the, the city manager for consideration, unless there's any opposition to that.
I don't have opposition, but I'm, I am concerned that it isn't, uh, you can't make that a requirement. Frank would, it's, it's Frank's goal.
So I, I think if I'm understanding, you're, you're wanting to request that for a future agenda item. And so that we can have the discussion on it? Okay, um, Councilmember Kleinfeldter?
Um, I attended my Zoom. Oh, I, yes, I attended the League of California Cities meeting. Um, I will be at another one in person at, in Lincoln on July twenty-first. Um, I'm, I'm very happy with the way Charles is getting alerts out to us. I, I am very concerned about the SB five eighty-four because it was running a double course. It was running in two committees and then passed out of the Senate and is on a fast, basically a fast track to approval. So, um, that doesn't give us much time to, um, advocate our side of the story. So I will continue if the city would like to, um, e- forward on those emails, alerts. Fill up your email. And, and keep on trucking. I don't have any future agenda items at this time, and I'm sure I will. Um, and I'll provide them to Margaret.
Vice Mayor Sim?
Uh, yes, I, it's a short report. I had noticed that there's been quite a bit of discussion about whether the contractor on Shandala Road was pulling water out of our, our fire hydrants in our city and whether they're being charged. And I actually went over it today, and I noticed that they had a water meter on the fire hydrant, it's being meters. So it, uh, clearly is being metered and they're being charged. So, uh, I think that can put a stop to all that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, um, I just want to share that, um, some of the activities that we have here in Plymouth, um, through ACRA. Um, line dancing continues to be popular. Um, I, uh, bingo, I think, which was last week. Um, sounds like that was really, um, well-received. And then, um, yoga in the park is still happening. Um, I went to it, I had an Acra, Acra meeting about a week ago, and I, I brought up with, um, the executive director that I'd like to talk more about bringing kids' activities to Plymouth. And he has some ideas, we have some ideas, and, uh, I'll continue to, to follow up with him on that. And that's all I have for right now.
Sorry, just 'cause you brought it up with Acra. And something I wa- I, we were talking about it this morning at my office. Acra used to have a big giant blow-up mute movie screen. I wanna know where that movie screen, yeah, they used to do movies in the park. I just wanna know where that movie screen is.
Right. It was all of the parks.
Yes.
Have a different set, Hollywood. Here in the park, you know, Daxton Theater Park. That was great.
Tracy Turner, yep, was running Acra at that time. And I, I haven't seen Tracy in a minute. I know I could probably just step into the full shot, but, um, she would have knowledge of, uh, uh, just to.
Or Caroline.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note to follow up on that. Okay, um, unless there's anything else.
Mayor?
Covered everybody.
Did you wanna report on our meeting this morning?
Yes, thank you. Um, this morning, Ms. Roberts and I and a member of the community, Jim Wise, met with, um, folks from Senator Alvarado Gill's office to talk about some funding opportunities or just talk about how we get access funding opportunities for the infrastructure, for the water and sewer line, um, or the fa- the, uh, water and sewer lines. And, um, I think that my takeaway was that they're, they're very invested in our community here. Um, one of the staff members, um, oddly enough, said that these are the kind of projects that she likes. Um, and, um, anyway, so I, I felt like it was really well-received and that we really have a good ally with the Senator's office. And so we'll continue to meet with them, follow up with them, and see how they can support us. Is there anything you wanna add to that?
Just that one of the staff members used to have worked for in the federal legislation, so she's good at assisting with the federal and state going together. So that's helpful.
For sure. Thank you. Anything else, anybody? Okay, um, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you.